Okay, can I have your attention? My name is Senator Bonisek. I chair Senate Judiciary. We're going to start the public hearing today. We gave a notice issued on January 29, 2016 pursuant to Section 104 of the Public Officers Law. We're here today for the public hearing pursuant to Governor Cuomo's nominee for Associate Judge of the Court of Appeals, Michael Garcia. At this time, we're going to wait for Ruth, so I won't acknowledge her now. This hearing is the sixth vacancy on the Court of Appeals that the Judiciary Committee has considered since 2013. The seat became vacant due to retirement of Judge Susan Reed. We thank Judge Reed for her years of service to this bench. Before I ask the witnesses to come up who will testify, let me acknowledge the senators that are here. Senator Diaz, Senator Zolio, Senator Boyle, Senator Hoilman, Senator Serrino, Senator Breslin. I think we have enough for the public hearing. We have two witnesses. The witnesses appearing for the committee, number one, Vincent Doyle III, past president of the New York State Bar Association and current chair of the Association's Committee to Review Judicial Nominations. Vincent, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Senator Bonisek, members of the Senate Judiciary Committee, ladies and gentlemen. As the senator just indicated, my name is Vincent Doyle. I am a past president of the New York State Bar Association. I am the current chair of the Association's Committee to Review Judicial Nominations. It is my privilege to appear before you today in support of the appointment of Michael J. Garcia as Associate Judge of the New York State Court of Appeals. On behalf of the Association, I thank you for the opportunity to testify concerning Mr. Garcia's qualifications for the Court of Appeals. In testimony just last month on Chief Judge Janet DiFiore's nomination, our State Bar President, David P. Miranda, outlined the process by which our association evaluates Court of Appeals candidates. In the interest of time, I will not repeat that testimony here. It is in my written testimony. Following those procedures, however, after Mr. Garcia was selected as a candidate by the Commission on Judicial Nominations, Mr. Garcia's qualifications were evaluated by our committee in accordance with our procedures, and he met with our full committee. As a result of our investigation and interview, it was the opinion of our committee that Mr. Garcia is well-qualified for the position of Associate Judge of the Court of Appeals. Well-qualified is our highest rating. Mr. Garcia possesses strong skills that we believe will serve him well as an Associate Judge. Since 2008, he has been a partner at Kirkland &amp; Ellis, LLP, where he established a pro bono criminal defense program and received awards from the Legal Aid Society for outstanding pro bono service. Previously, he served as United States Attorney for the Southern District of New York, a 250 lawyer office. Earlier in his career, he served in several positions within the U.S. Department of Justice and the Department of Homeland Security, as well as nine years as an Assistant U.S. Attorney. He was his law school class valedictorian, and I'm pleased to note that he served two years as law clerk to then Associate Judge Judith S. Kay. And of course, the Association joins the New York's legal community and the state in whole in mourning Judge Kay's recent passing. Mr. Garcia has been active in the New York State Bar Association. In 2010, he co-chaired our Association's Task Force on Government Ethics, which published a report containing a number of recommendations to help restore public competence in governmental institutions. On behalf of the New York State Bar Association, I am pleased to endorse Michael Garcia's appointment to the Court of Appeals and urge confirmation of his appointment. Thank you for your attention and for inviting participation by the New York State Bar Association in this important process.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doyle. We've been joined by Senator Croce, Senator De Francisco. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Doyle? Hearing none, I think you're finished, and thank you very much for your report.
Thank you, Senator.
Before I call up our second witness, I circulated the resume of Mr. Garcia to the Judiciary Committee on Monday, February 5, to provide an overview of the nominee. Based on my review of the candidate prior to this hearing, I think Governor Cuomo has nominated an outstanding, impressive judicial nominee with extensive experience in criminal and regulatory laws, as you will hear today. Not to repeat some of the things that Mr. Doyle said, but I just would like to point out some of the highlights that struck me. As been said, he has served as a clerk to the late Judge Judith Kay. He was nine years as a federal prosecutor in the U.S. Attorney's Office in Manhattan from 1992 to 2001. There, he personally prosecuted a number of high-profile cases involving national security, including the 1993 terrorist bombing of the World Trade Center and the 1998 bombings of the U.S. Embassies in East Africa. For his work on these cases, he was twice awarded the Department of Justice's Exceptional Service Award, the DOJ's highest honor. He led various executive branch enforcement agencies, including Secretary for ICE, which stands for Immigration and Customs Enforcement, within the Department of Homeland Security, where he oversaw 20,000 employees from 2001 to 2005. He served as the United States Attorney from 2005 to 2008, where he supervised numerous public corruption matters involving state, local officials' fraud, and chaired the Attorney General's Advisory Committee on Terrorism and National Security. Currently works as a partner in Kirkland &amp; Ellis, LLP in New York, where he has been for the past six and a half years. Interestingly, he served as independent chair of the Investigatory Chamber of the Ethics Committee of FIFA, investigating corruption in world soccer, from 2012 to 2014. He served as Vice President of the Americas for Interpol, the international police organization. I mean, what a varied background, very diversified in experience. That said, we're charged with the duty of doing our due diligence, and at this time, let me call up Evan Goldberg on behalf of the New York State Trial Lawyers Association. Evan, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. esteemed members of the Senate Judiciary Committee, good afternoon all. My name is Evan Goldberg. I'm the President of the New York State Trial Lawyers Association, and I appear here today on behalf of the NISLA Board of Directors and our 3,500 attorney members who practice in trial and appellate courts throughout New York State. Thank you, Chairman Bonisek, for inviting us to participate today and for this opportunity to speak in support of Governor Cuomo's nomination of Michael Garcia for Associate Judge of the New York State Court of Appeals. For 60 years, NISLA has fought to protect equal access to the civil justice system for all New Yorkers. The constitutional right to a trial by jury is the foundation of that equal access. The appointment of a new judge to the Court of Appeals is of great significance to NISLA. The legal rights of hundreds of thousands of ordinary New Yorkers that NISLA members represent depend upon judicial restraint and careful application of the law by each member of the court. NISLA's Judiciary Committee had the honor of interviewing all the candidates recommended by the New York State Commission on Judicial Nomination to fill the vacancy created by the retirement of Judge Susan Reed. The panel was impressed by Michael Garcia's commitment to ethics and the fair interpretation of the law. The committee rated him as qualified and recommended. Mr. Garcia has a distinguished legal record. His CV, as the chairman noted, is too full of noteworthy and diverse acts and accomplishments to go through in my testimony, but I would like to focus on a few important aspects. Michael Garcia has proved himself to be a national and international expert on the law. He has served on the President's Corporate Fraud Task Force and the Attorney General's Advisory Committee on White Collar Crime, and chaired the Attorney General's Advisory Committee on Terrorism and National Security. He led critical national security agencies, working domestically and abroad, to ensure the safety of our country. Court of Appeals judges must rule on a wide breadth of legal matters. In his tenure as United States Attorney, Michael Garcia supervised not only criminal cases, but a 50-lawyer civil division. His law enforcement experience ranges from prosecuting terrorists to international fraud investigations and serving as Vice President of the Americas for Interpol. His broad range of public and private sector experience will give him important insight into the variety of cases that will be decided by the court. In conclusion, Governor Cuomo has made a worthy choice in his nomination for Associate Judge. We welcome Michael Garcia's commitment to justice and ethics and look forward to his confirmation as an Associate Judge of the New York State Court of Appeals. And thank you all for the opportunity again to testify today.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. Senator De Francisco.
I've got a letter indicating a group of judges, whether they were qualified, highly qualified, recommended, highly recommended, and...
Our letter?
You know the letter I'm talking about?
Yes, our letter, I can see it.
Okay. What's the difference between recommended and highly recommended? What criteria are...
Well, what I can tell you is that in Mr. Garcia's case, he'd appeared before us seeking nomination as Chief Judge to the New York State Court of Appeals. Mr. Garcia had never been a judge before. We interviewed him. We found him to be qualified and recommended him to be appointed as Chief Judge of the State of New York. After that decision was made, when the screening panel once again reconvened to interview candidates for the vacancy created by Judge Reed's departure, Mr. Garcia was given the opportunity to come back again and to revisit his recommendation, but Mr. Garcia was happy with the recommendation and elected to maintain it.
Okay, but just, I don't want to beat the dead horse, but are there certain guidelines which would make someone, for example, Aaron Paradado?
Paradado.
Paradado, highly qualified and highly recommended. What factors made her highly qualified?
Well, I can't go into...
More highly recommended as opposed to disrecommended?
There's no checklist, Senator, as to what makes one highly qualified, what makes one qualified. I will point out that Justice Paradado was a sitting justice of the appellate division with extensive appellate court experience, and that is something that weighed heavily into the committee's considerations.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any other questions of Mr. Goldberg? Senator Diaz?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on this. I have a question. When you say qualified and recommended, so you mean that if you were the one to pick, if the trial lawyer were the one to pick, you would not pick Michael Garcia?
Unfortunately, we're not the ones to pick. All we do is give ratings, Senator.
That's assuming that you are the one to pick. So when you say highly qualified and highly recommended, again, qualified and recommended, that mean that if you were the one in charge of picking, you would not choose Michael Garcia?
For the chief judge position during which Mr. Garcia received the qualified and recommended rating, there were other...
That is not my question. I'm not a lawyer, but that is not my question. My question is qualified and recommended versus highly qualified and highly recommended. If you were the one to pick among those, who would you pick?
I would have to look at all the factors, Senator Diaz. It's not our position to make the pick. We rate the candidates based upon their experience, based upon their writings, based upon how they interview with us and express their thoughts and viewpoints concerning legal processes, legal principles, and their willingness to hear controversy.
Then you look onto all those things when you was interviewing, so before you make a recommendation?
Of course we do.
But then, then answer my question.
This was the first time that Mr. Garcia had appeared before us. Oftentimes, candidates start out at a certain rating and then change their ratings upon repeat visits to our screening committee. And in this case, Mr. Garcia had not returned.
Why would you think, let's go in the limbo here, what would you say, what would you think would be the reason why among one, two, three, four, highly qualified and highly recommended, the governor choose only one, the one that says only recommended?
I'm certain, Senator Diaz, that you would have to ask the governor that question, as to why he made his selection. We weren't the only ones to issue ratings.
Would you say because you're the only minority there?
I have no idea.
Would you think that would carry some weight, being the only Hispanic minority?
I have, I'll tell you that that does not factor into our considerations, Senator, when we rate candidates for judicial appointment. We rate them upon what's before us, the interviewing, the writings, their legal philosophy, what comes before us.
I'm Hispanic.
I'm aware.
And I would like to see Hispanic, but I don't like to see this thing here, like you saying four of them highly qualified and highly recommended, and then the Hispanic say qualified and recommended, and we choosing that one. I don't, you know, doesn't feel right.
Senator, I'm going to tell you that my children are half Hispanic. My wife is from Ecuador, and I would like nothing more than worthy Hispanic candidates to be on the bench. My father was a Supreme Court Justice in the state of New York. I have tremendous respect for the judiciary, and I can assure you that the process was fulfilled.
Last question. How would you feel?
Last question, Senator.
How would you feel if you were one of those judges, one of the four, that are highly qualified, highly recommended, and you have not been chosen, and you passed, and you have been passed for one that is only qualified and recommended? How would you feel if you were the one of the four?
Well, the New York State Trial Lawyers, Senator, is not the ultimate arbiter as to who is highly recommended or highly qualified. We issued our recommendations, and as to how candidates feel, I'm sure that candidates, having put forth their candidacy, were disappointed in not receiving the nomination from the governor, but I don't know how to answer that question.
Are we supposed to choose the best among everything? Are we supposed to be the best qualified, the highly qualified and highly recommended?
I think in this case, Senator, we were very fortunate to have a number of bests, and we had many fine candidates to choose from, and I think that New York State is very lucky and fortunate that the Court of Appeals is being constituted with qualified members who are going to do justice to the people of the state of New York.
Okay, we'd like to move on. Anybody have any other questions of Mr. Goldberg? Hearing none, thank you very much. We're joined by four other senators, Senator Almara, Senator Amador, Senator Razenhofer, and our ranking member of Judiciary, Hassel Thompson. In addition to these two speakers, we've had quite a bit of written submissions, and let me just put them in the record. Letter of support from Carol Robers Roman, President and CEO of the Women's Legal Defense and Education Fund, submitted February 4, 2016. Submission by Carol Nowey in opposition to the judicial system in general, submitted February 5, 2016. Submission by James Brady in opposition to the judicial system and the nominee submitted February 5, 2016. Letter of support from Betty Lugo, President of the Puerto Rican Bar Association, submitted February 5, 2016. Letter of support from Kevin Gomez, submitted February 6, 2016. And letter of support from the Museo del Barrio, submitted February 8, 2016. We have a submission from the Center for Judicial Accountability in opposition to the judicial system and the judicial pay raises, submitted February 8, 2016. Excuse me. At this time, we welcome our ranker, Senator Ruth Hassel Thompson, who will now address the Judiciary Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't take very long. I will say to you that this is the last time I will take a constituent before any hearing that may come, which delayed me, and I do apologize to all for that, but my constituents continue to be important as well. Each time we've come to participate in the role of appointing and hearing recommendations from the governor or nominees to any of the courts, but particularly to our Court of Appeals, I would hope that all of us do so thoughtfully and with great care. I have been branded with the term "social engineering," and it is one that I have no embarrassment for accepting that title, primarily because until we get to the point that we no longer have the necessity to ensure that there is a balance of diversity. It's very interesting that when people of color talk about diversity, it becomes social engineering. But yet, I've sat for my ancestry for hundreds of years and watched this bench and others not be reflective of the needs and certainly of the ethnicity and culture of the people who they are bound to serve. So it gives me great pleasure to have been afforded the opportunity to sit on the state senate at this time in my life and in the life of the history of the state of New York and be able to do what is necessary to ensure that our courts are as reflective of the people who live in this state. And in that process, it allows us to be assured that the judgments that are handed down have the best possible chance to be just and central. I have had the opportunity to meet, as all of us, many of us have, with our nominee, Mr. Garcia. There had been some concerns in his, in some decisions that he made in his past administrative responsibilities that had questions. I feel that, to the best of my knowledge, those questions have been satisfied, and my questions today will be strictly about the role that he will play on the court and what that will mean to the people of the state of New York. And again, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for the opportunity to address this body, and I, again, make no apologies for my role in determining that the state of New York must be reflective, reflective of particularly when it comes to policies of this high caliber by people who are qualified. And everybody who knows me knows that quality comes before quantity, and so that I am pleased in the nomination that the governor has made in this candidate, and I look forward to the opportunity with you to ask pertinent questions that will help us to ascertain not his qualifications, but his, what drives him to want to do this and make sure that he is representative of who we want to be representing us on the Court of Appeals. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Thompson. Yes, Senator Diaz?
I'm Puerto Rican, I'm Hispanic, I'm broken English. I want people, my people to be appointed. I want to see minority get together there, but it bothers me, it hurts me. It really hurts me, especially to hear Senator Thompson say that she wants better, whoever knows her knows that she wants, she prefers quality before quantity. But, you know, when I, to me, I see Puerto Rican, as Hispanic, I would be very, very honored to have a Hispanic being appointed. But when I see four members being nominated, being qualified, highly qualified, and then the Hispanic being qualified, I said, yes, I would, I'm honored to have a Hispanic there. But it's questionable. It is not, it's supposed to be Hispanic, black, Hispanic, white, highly qualified, highly recommended, equal. Then we say, we got the best, not only because it is Hispanic, not only because it's black, not only because minority, it's because the best. But when they bring me, when they bring here a qualification, a highly qualified, four members of the judiciary, highly qualified, and then the minority, only minority one, qualified, and then we had to choose that one, I would choose that one on the protest. To me, to me, to me, hello, to me, something's not right.
Okay, let me jump in here. I think we're going a little astray. I think we're putting too much emphasis on highly qualified or qualified, because when an individual comes before us, we look at resumes, we question the nominee, we try to get to the essence of their experience, their character, what they're made of, and it's the combination of all those things where we make a judgment. It's not going to depend on whether a bar association or a trial association with many members weighing in.
Wait, wait, wait.
I want to finish. We listened to you, Senator Diaz, so let me finish my remarks. It's where they weigh in, that's just one factor of many factors that we make judgments on. And we have put people on the bench that were African-American, that were women, that were Hispanic. We do not care about the color of the skin or the sex of the person. We care about competence, experience, qualifications. That's how each member makes their judgment, that's how they vote. Now, do you want to say something else, Senator Thompson?
I think I really wanted to just ask the question. I think that it has been my experience that when each of the associations have come before this committee, they have established what their criteria is. And the criteria of this organization is that there's no such thing as a greatly qualified. They either qualified or not qualified. It's like a school that gives you a pass or a fail. It's not an A, it's not a B, it's not a C. If you pass, you pass, and I think that that's been my experience. If that's not correct, then I will stand corrected. There are some organizations who have a different criteria, and my understanding is that in the other organizations, he was very qualified. And so if that is the truth, then we're talking apples and apples. But if we're not, then that's, you know, that's open for discussion. But my comments have to do with the fact that the person started out very qualified. Whatever the language that the organization used to determine it, he's very qualified. After he's qualified, then I begin to look at other issues. And so I would not do social engineering before I look at the quality, and that was, that was what the nature of my discussion was about, and I will stand on that and I will repeat it every opportunity that I have.
Okay, we're joined by Senator Savino. Senator Diaz, you have something to say?
Then we, then, based on what you and Madam Senator said, then we should get rid of this recommendation. Why then we use these people to send these people to ask them for a recommendation? Why? So we're going to come here and say, oh, well, that's one, I don't care, but then? Don't send, don't, don't bring them to testify or to request a recommendation from them, because that doesn't count. If that doesn't count, why use them?
Okay, Senator Diaz, thank you for your remarks. That concludes the public hearing. I'm now going to call...
Excuse me, I have one quick...
Oh, you do, Senator De Francisco?
One quick comment. Since I started all this...
I know you did.
Yes, you did.
I wanted to explain what I was getting at.
Go ahead, if they're going to watch you. Go ahead, explain now. Go ahead. Go ahead.
What I was getting at was that we've had this kind of mincing of recommendations by this organization in the past, and I didn't understand then, and I don't understand now, why there's all these different permutations of their recommendations. And it would be a lot simpler if they indicated qualified and recommended, if they choose to, rather than all these little qualifications that really they can't explain from one to the other. That's why I was raising it. This individual, and whoever gives their opinion, like the trial lawyers did, can be taken or it can be thrown out, is totally not worth the mention. The governor is going to make the decision on who he's going to appoint, and we're going to make the decision on who we recommend. And I don't think we should read anything more to this than that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator DeFrancisco, and maybe that's a suggestion that the Bar Association and the trial lawyers, as they move forward in the future, when the next Court of Appeals nominee comes, you may want to consider that classification. The public hearing is now closed.